It's eight thirty. I'll call this morning's meeting to order. We'll move into the approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Citizens to be heard. Is there any citizen wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of payments of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Our April tenth meeting minutes are presented. Looking for approval of the minutes.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Our employee boards. So today we're recognizing Steve Halverson for 25 years of dedicated service to Clay County. Steve is busy out in the field working, so we'll present that to...
Oh, we can't see him.
There he is! Here's your report, buddy.[93.66][93.66](Laughter) Sorry, Vrenberg, today. Get up here.
Yeah. You love riding with him?
Who?
Brian Vrenberg.
Hey, thank you so much for 25 years of dedicated service. I can honestly say that the roads are better because you're in charge of them. So if ever there's an issue that comes up, it's funny, I always want you to go look at it. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, Ralph, he's one of our most senior blade operators. He's the guy I lean on probably the most for asking for any assistance or help as we go up and maintain these county roads. He's got a great sense of humor. He knows everybody down in the area, and we sure appreciate him. Thank you, Ralph.[150.12][150.12](Applause)
All right. Moving into 30 years of service, John Farnberg. John, this plaque is presented to you in grateful recognition of 30 years of dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you so much, and I know you've got a transition coming up, and we will definitely miss you, but thank you for all of your input and dedication through the years. And I think Steve has something to say.
Yeah, what do you say about this guy? I think that we look at a lot of the... 32 years ago, we started here as a part-time employee, kind of took a little two-year break in South Dakota, and came back and has been with us for the last 32 years. And I think a lot of times we talk about Clay County, what kind of culture do we want to have here, and what kind of people we want to recruit and retain. And I think John has those characteristics that we're really going to miss as an agency. And I think, as you mentioned, this is kind of bittersweet because it's the last recognition, and he loves stuff just like this. I'm trying to keep him up here as long as I can. But the great thing about John is I think when you get to this point, you say, hey, can I... what did I do? What's my legacy here? But I think you really left a lasting impression and footprint on our facility, and so congratulations, you're going to be greatly missed.[242.34][242.34](Applause)
John, if you were in the Army, they'd call you a lifer, so...[251.62][251.62](Laughter)
All right. We'll move into a recognition of two $35 donations for restorative justice program.
Thank you, Brian.
I'm missing that. So just want to thank Zee Brenneman and B. Wengler for their donations. That's very thoughtful. We really appreciate it. Our 835 item is a request of approval to fill two full-time vacancies. Julie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have two full-time vacancies. I have one officer who's going to the Fargo Police Department and one going to the Corwin County Jail. So I'm requesting that we get those two positions filled.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And then we need to renew our contract with Mend Correctional Care.
That's correct. We've had Mend Correctional Care since 2014. It's a private medical contract that we have, has been very successful. We've gotten wonderful service from them and would really like to continue with that service that we have with them. With the new facility opening up, I reached out to them last year on what our needs would be for that new facility. So I did have it all in my 2018 budget, as well as the proposed 2019 budget that I had given you. So our needs are quite a bit higher when we move to the facility, since we have more inmates and our medical staff will have to deal with them on a daily basis, so...
Just to clarify, though, it's not necessarily that their cost of the service has gone up significantly. It's just because of the additional inmates.
Additional inmates, correct.
Discussion.
Do we pay this whether we need the medical or not, or is that just...
Yes, we will, because we will always need the medical, and it includes health techs for med delivery. It's cheaper to have a health tech medication delivery than a corrections officer, so we had that in the back of our mind when we came up with our staffing plan to reduce costs.
Is there more that's needed, or is this just a contract that no matter how much we use it, that's what it is?
It is. There is some stipulations in there. If our average daily population goes below 100, then they will reduce our costs. If it goes over 170, then they want us to fair renegotiate in fair understanding that our population has increased.
Well, it's definitely a vital service that's a non-negotiable item that we need, and it really has helped us in the past. So what are the board's wishes?
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs. Motion passes. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
One statement.
Julie, I'm wondering if you could maybe sometime in this next month, towards the end of the month, have your transition team come back to us and let us know how things are going.
Sure will. That sounds like a great idea.
That's kind of a critical deal, and we make sure the planning is going on time.
Will do. We'll plan something at the end of the month.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Our item number three is a presentation on adverse childhood experiences. Carolyn Sternad from the Collaborative Early Child Initiative. Good morning.
Good morning. I have some material for you.
Yes.
For your reference. Thank you for having me here this morning. It's been a while since the Collaborative has been here to kind of give you a report. We work pretty closely with social services, as well as the local advocacy council for children's mental health, who next week will be bringing their report. But today I'm here really to talk about adverse childhood experiences, but while I was here, I just wanted to kind of put some material together for you for the Collaborative so that you know what the programs are that we are giving some financial support to. So you'll find that on the first page of the document that I have. One of the pieces that right now is a priority and has been a need for a long time is the transportation piece. So I have visited with Rhonda, and she's forming a committee to look at the transportation issues. Several of us participated in a webinar, and so we've learned some different strategies and programs that are across the country that have addressed the same or similar transportation issues that we have here in Clay County. So I'm very hopeful that that will result in some of the difficulties that we've been having. The brochure, the School Based Mental Health Services. Rhonda and I came to you last fall. It's a collaboration between school funding, as well as the Collaborative, and social services. And so sometimes when we're not familiar with the mental health system, we don't really know what we're talking about with mental health services. So I put some information together for you. These are all services that are being offered in one or more of our schools. The services that we're providing are based on what the school is looking for. So you may not find all of those, but I'm very pleased that we have mental health services now in all of our schools in the county. So it's a good thing to have. That's where the kids are, and the program started out with one day, and it continues to grow into the second and third day of services.
And I think, because I know Lakeland is really involved in that, and that's the board that I'm on, but statewide, that's something that's rare to have the presence of mental health services in the schools. And so I'm really excited that Clay County has really kind of kept that as a focus specifically because those are kind of some formative years, so to be able to have that presence is important.
It is, and I don't have to tell you that we see more and more kids with those needs. The highest group of kids that are being removed from their programming actually is in the kindergarten and preschool age, which is kind of scary when you think about it because they'll be in their school systems pretty soon. So today I just wanted to talk to you about adverse childhood experiences, and I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with this. Jim's heard me talk about this a number of times, and it's just a really key component. As I have told Commissioner Haney, we are going to implement this, you know, across our county, and then you guys won't need as many beds in your juvenile center because we're going to kind of stem that, you know, tide and turn it around the other way. So adverse childhood experiences are things that happen to us in our childhood that affect our ability to kind of function in our community. They're common. They go across all social, economic, and racial and cultural populations. When you look at what they've looked at, and this is an evidence-based process, it's been around for about 25 years. We have, in Minnesota, we started working with this in 2014, and so currently our students are asked questions about some ACEs in the student survey that they take during the school system. But when you look at some of those areas that we address in that, we're talking about living with somebody with a substance abuse, the parental separation or divorce, living particularly with battered mothers. We see a lot of effects with that. Living in a home where we have some criminal behavior, and we have, you know, a number of kiddos that parents are now incarcerated. One of them is incarcerated. When we look at that neglect, we're talking about emotional and physical neglect, and when we're talking about abuse, we're talking about emotional, physical, and sexual abuse. We in Minnesota, a lot of our ACEs are not particularly high, and that's a good thing. ACEs really don't define a person, but it helps us, as Superintendent Jensen said last week at a meeting, it really helps us understand where they're coming from and why they're doing what they're doing. ACEs really started out as trying to figure out why we have so many people with so many different health problems. And it's kind of morphed from there into really talking about how the brain is wired and how those experiences affect that brain wiring, and how some of them are really intergenerational, meaning that they are going, you know, their parent married somebody with a substance abuse, and so they have a higher risk of marrying, you know, the child has a higher risk of marrying somebody with a sexual abuse. So if you look at the slide that says examples of ACE attributable problems, that's kind of where we talk about a number of the different health risks that are involved in that, and that's kind of where we want to sort of focus our piece. There's some real connections with depression and obesity, as well as substance use and cigarette use, which then, of course, causes the COPD and heart disease as well. We know that for kiddos with high ACEs, if we don't intervene with them, they will continue with those patterns of what they have become used to. They live in chaos, and so when we, if we don't help them gain some skills in how to survive in a calm atmosphere, then they will always have to kind of live in chaos, and when chaos isn't there, then they just make it chaos. So we're talking about some of those kids in school that just can't be in a classroom, and so they're going to cause some problems and a little chaos because it makes them feel much safer. But of course, it disrupts the learning, not only of themselves, but of other students as well. And then that chaos just kind of continues into their adulthood and teenaging areas. The population attributable risk slide, just so I can explain that a little bit, through the research that Dr. Anda has done, you can see that kind of middle section, and it kind of looks like an oil slick, and it's got some percentages in there. And so when we think about, for instance, alcoholism, in his studies, he has been able to attribute 65% of alcoholism comes from those adverse childhood experiences. The adverse experiences rank from 1 to 15. There's some questions that are given, and then based on that, they're ranked. For instance, if a child has experienced physical abuse, that's considered one ACE. We don't count it for each time that they've done, had some abuse done to them. Chronic depression is another one that's pretty high. They can attribute about 47% of that. Depression is one of the highest reasons for disability services or disability through Social Security, and it's one of the highest reasons for why employees don't get to work is because of their depression. Many people, because of their still some stigma and mental illness piece, will self-medicate to address their depression. But the good news about this, because it all seems a little bit depressing and a little bit overwhelming, the Collaborative, probably about three years ago now, kind of threw their hat in the ring to become a pilot project to address ACEs in our communities. So what that means is we've put together a coalition that is addressing, looking at places where we need to be bringing this message to, as well as kind of formulating a plan for our community to kind of spread this community wide. We currently, last fall, had some state trainers come in and trained 12 individuals here in Clay County that can go out and do these presentations. The presentations are free, and they can range anywhere from, we typically like to have at least 45 minutes to do the whole kind of core talk of it, all the way up to two or three hours, depending on which professionals and they would like some strategies and components of that. The training involves, the first section is really about that brain-based and the neurology or stuff about it, how the brain is wired and how those experiences affect the brain. The second part of it is talking about the ACE study specifically, and it kind of goes through some of the data with that. The third part is actually my favorite part because we, as a community, have the ability to change the trajectory of this. While we will probably never get rid of all ACEs, we have the opportunity to reduce ACEs over the lifetime of our kids, and when we reduce those ACEs for our young people, we're reducing them for many generations to come. So we're just very excited about that. We do not have our plan rolled out yet, or ready to roll out, but we are working on it. We're looking at several different things. There is a number of communities and counties within our state that have taken this project and kind of really embraced it and moved it out into all avenues of the county. And so we've, you know, I've mentioned it to Commissioner Haney, that, you know, when we get that program all tidy and wrapped up with a bow, and we know exactly what we're doing, we'll probably be back again to present it to the board because we would really appreciate your support in rolling that out. We'd also appreciate that any time that you're with a group and you think that they should know about ACEs, you know, let me know. We're happy to set something up again. We'll base it on what they are looking for. We have the ability to kind of flex the material. All of the material comes from Dr. Anda, so it's been a very effective process. But the change really is going to be up to us, and it can't just take the Collaborative to do or social services to do. It really is going to be a change in how we look at this and how we approach it, and then together how we change it. So...
Great information. Questions from the board?
I'd like to thank Carolyn for making the presentation to us.
Yeah. Well, thank you definitely for your presence in our community. I know that, as you said, change is up to us, so thanks for your educating as you go around the community. Brian, did you have something?
I do, Madam Chair. Before Carolyn leaves, I just wanted the board to know that she was very supportive, and she was one of the offices that we had to relocate over our juvenile. She relocated so that juvenile, or the extension could relocate, so that Steve could relocate, so that we could do our remodeling project. So we really appreciate her collaborative effort.
Yes. Thank you.
I think I'm in a closet now, but it's good because, you know, I like to keep a lot of things, so it's going to be an opportunity.
Well, thank you for your flexibility.
Yeah. No problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn. Have a good day.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
All right. Item number four is a request for approval of agreement and resolution for intersection safety. Dave Overvoom, welcome.
Morning.
Morning.
I've got a cooperative construction agreement and resolution to be approved by the board, and this is for the intersection lighting project that we're doing. It's kind of a four, this project is a four-county project, Clay, Wilka, and Menoma and Becker. And the cooperative agreement with MINDOT spells out that MINDOT will pay the 10% county share. This project, on all the other county-intersections, it's 90% federally funded, 10% county-funded. But on the county-trump highway intersections, MINDOT picks up the other 10%, and it's spelled out that way in this agreement. The intersections that we have, the Trump Highway county intersections in this agreement, there's two on Highway 9, one on 18 and 26, and then there's one on Highway 75 in Cragness. So it's County Road 5 that kind of shoots by the White House there. That's the intersection there. So that's, so basically, it's a 13-page agreement spelling out that they're going to cover that 10% share. The counties, all the counties listed are all responsible for the power. That's usually a standard with MINDOT's intersections. We pay the life of the monthly power expense.
Well, the nice thing about this, I've never heard so many positive comments on anything that we're doing, as much as I do on these intersections. People really appreciate having them lit up. I know Commissioner Campbell specifically heard some comments on these, and I think residents are really excited to hear that these are going up, so thank you.
I agree. It has worked out really good, hasn't it? Since that very first one that we did.
I think the first one kind of set the stage, but, you know, sometimes it takes one to improve how they work, you know, and this is good work. Madam Chair, I would move resolution 2018-20.
We have a motion to approve the resolution and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Moving into our committee reports. Commissioner Campbell.
All right. Last Tuesday, of course, after a board meeting we all attended, or most of us that were able to, attended the annual Greater Ferguson-Mooreton Economic Development Annual Meeting. That was quite a good turnout there. And there's some brochures here. Maybe Jenny, if you'd like to, I know you weren't able to make that one.
Thank you.
Yep. And then later on that day, we had our first Oakport Joint Powers Board meeting since this time in 2014. Obviously, with the annexation, there's very little that's left to do in that, with the exception of Track 3, which is along Highway 75 quarter north. And we had an application for a continuous permit to build another building by Jeremy Greigwire, and we did approve that, and we want to thank them for their continued business in Mooreton and Clay County. Then on Wednesday, we had our Prairie Lakes meeting, and as I had reported last week, there was quite a bit of stuff that was talked about in terms of new options. And then we thought we had it all worked out at our finance meeting the week before, and then the night before, our Prairie Lakes meeting, I got a letter saying that they were recommending no changes to the annual payments. And so we went in there with our goal in mind, and after discussion, what I talked to you about before, we prevailed on, and so the, but one thing we need to, and I know, Brian, how we can make certain of this, and I suppose it'll be that we're going to redo the document that talks about, that it's not, that 9,400 is not a 9,400 number. It's a percentage of the capacity of the facility. So I know that there's going to be some language prepared to make changes to the documents that reflect, and I know we'll want Jenny to review that too when that comes, but that's to kind of protect Clay County in the future from any kind of thing happening. But just as an outcome of this, what they had proposed, keep in mind that in 2017, Clay County paid $357,000 into that facility for the amount over and above the $6,000 that we trade, and they were proposing that we go to $401,196 in 2018. And based on the capacity changes, we went into them, and, you know, working with Kirk and everybody, we went into them, and we said, no, our capacity should be 8,250, which means we had to pay in 2250, and so our annual number should be 265,500, not 401,000. And ultimately, we convinced them that that is the way it's going to be. So our payment actually will decrease from 357 in 2017 to 265 in 2018, which amounts to about a $7,625 per month reduction from 2017.
Good news. Thanks, Kevin.
And then what we need to maybe, and I kind of looked through our bills today. I see we didn't make a payment this week, but I think for the next two months, because of this reduction, we'll see, because we paid the first three payments at the higher rate, the first three months, or probably four months now, we probably already paid, so we will probably go a couple months with, we make monthly payments. All counties make monthly payments, so we'll probably go a couple months without having to make a payment. So that's the Prairie Lakes, and there was some really good news about the facility itself and all the investment into the corrections that was needed to be done there. It's running really well. There's the potential for having even higher steam generation than we've had before, and we do have the ability to sell that steam. We have customers who want it if we can generate more. So anything that we can do to keep that thing flowing fully is just, in keeping out of landfills, is just going to be good for us. Okay, so that's that one. And then I came back to town that same day for a diversion public outreach meeting, and really what we had that day was kind of a recap of the many meetings that they've gone to regarding explaining to different localities the new Plan B that's out there. And so that was the primary discussion of that. And then there were some updates on the analytics from the fmdiversion.com and that type of thing. That just shows that activity is picking up and there's interest in wanting information. So on Thursday morning, we had a solid waste meeting. So on Thursday morning, we had a solid waste meeting. And we got a report on the, from Maggie Gruber, on the Moorhead Commercial Single Sort Test Program, Pilot Program. I think it's a fantastic program that's gonna be held this year. And boy, I'll tell you what, they, I think they originally were planning for, what was it? Thirty participants. And by the time it went through MVA and the Fargo Chamber backed it, I think.
Forty-five.
Uh huh. Forty-five? So the number went from 20 to 45 interested businesses in Clay County and Moorhead to, to take part in this. And I think that's, that's just great. So. And then I gave, I gave the SWAC Committee these, I went into it in more depth about what I did in my report here on the Purum situation. But somehow, we need to make sure that for future boards, years and years down the road, that we know what the intent of that agreement was. That it was based on a percentage and not based on 9,400 tons. Okay, so then on, then that day, we also, I also had a diversion meeting. And we basically had dealt with some changes to some current contracts that were still authorized to do under the, you know, with the court injunction. Other than that, not much, not much to report there. And then Sunday afternoon, Grant and I, Commissioner Wayland and I, left for St. Paul to deal with, or to go there on behalf of Clay County for the, dealing with the bonding bill and our transfer station issues. And we, we, we spent the day yesterday seeing several key people. And I think overall, we've got really good responses from all of them. I think they recognize the significance, the need, and why a new transfer station would be beneficial. So, and I know Commissioner Wayland and maybe Kirk in the, here in the audience might want to comment on that too. But overall, I think it was a good day or a good, good trip. That's my report.
All right, well, thank you definitely for your presence in St. Paul. I know it's an important mission, so the fight continues for lack of better word. Commissioner Haney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Tuesday, as Commissioner Campbell related, I was one of the commissioners that attended the Greater Fargo-Moorehead Economic Development Annual Meeting and Banquet. And we heard presentations from some of the mini Silicon Valley-type developers and entrepreneurs in the River Valley. And it was very exciting to hear their presentations and some of the things that are going on in this area. Then on Wednesday, I attended the investiture of our new Clay County Judge, our newest Seventh District Judge, rather, Amber Gustafson. And then later on that, after the investiture, I went over to Fargo and I attended the Flood Finance Committee meeting where they had a number of issues. A lot of it is things that are echoing back from the injunction and whatnot that are taking place and adjustments that they have to make because of that. They've had a lot of delays due to weather last fall. And there was some changes in the rates from Houston Moore Group Engineering Rates that they explained because of increased professional liability impacted their rate structure. And so they had to do some negotiating on that. And then there was a presentation on the lot sales out at Oxbow. And they've, out of 97 lots, there are 33 lots left to sell and how that money in the memorandum of understanding with Oxbow to sell those lots is proceeding. And then they elected Rick Steen, the Cass County Commissioner, was elected Vice Chair of the Finance Committee. And then on Thursday, Diane Strifel, the Clay County Recorder, had a reception in the office down there for her retirement. And I think Friday was her last day. Many good years of service for Clay County and thank you to Diane Strifel. And good luck in your new ventures. I think she's gonna be visiting grandkids at various locations is the plan. So that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross?
Yeah, I too was at the Greater Fargo-Moorehead. I have to agree with, with Jen. There's some very good presentations given out there, you know, with how they've developed their companies. And some of them are growing and really growing. And it's gonna be some good, there was good news for Fargo-Moorehead area and Westmore Road. So it was good news. And Governor Berger spoke at that thing too. And he gave a very good talk too. He's just a very good speaker and very informative. I also was at Judge Gustafson's investiture. And that was a sort of a pretty emotional ceremony, you know? It's really, it was a big thing for her. She had a family there and stuff like that. It was a very nice thing. Wednesday evening, I went to Felton, Soil and Water Conservation District, had a thing on buffers. They invited all the farmers in the Wild Rice Watership Board in that area. They invited all the farmers to come to the Felton Community Center. And they talked to them how the buffer thing's gonna be going and what their program is and what they're offering to the farmers. And since Wild Rice wasn't doing what the Buffalo Watership is doing, so Soil and Water Conservation District has taken over there and gave a good presentation there. Gabe Foltz pretty much is out of control. After that, I went to the Glenland City Council meeting and their progress as well with their new developments, stuff like that. So the good meeting there. Then Thursday, Diane Strifel's there again. Good luck to her and good ass at Clay County. That's the ones I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Wayland?
Let's see, Commissioner Campbell already reported on the Oakport Joint Powers Board meeting. It's been a long time since we had one of those, but that went well. I was in Prairie Lakes and Purum for the meeting. And I don't think it can be overemphasized when we started that process that Clay County was the only one of the five counties involved that was going to be paying a significant amount more money every year. And by the time Commissioner Campbell was done with them, we're paying less and everybody else is paying more. So that's what we like to see, the outcome of those meetings be so. So that was good, good news. Attended the EDC meeting and I agree with the others that there were some great presentations there and updates. And we're still, haven't resolved the new president's position yet with the EDC, but that should be coming shortly. Let's see, I was in St. Paul at the Legislature with Commissioner Campbell and Kirk. And, you know, that's, that's going very well. Kirk's done an amazing job of getting us in a position to receive the bonding money for the new transfer station. But hopefully, in the end, that's a way it'll work out. We've got some issues that still need to be resolved. But hopefully, we can get those worked out and move forward with that project. Let's see, what else did, I went to, oh, we had the Solid Waste Advisory Meeting last week also. And had updates from the staff and, and discussion on a pilot project for single sort for commercial businesses in Moorhead. And that should be interesting. That starts in July. And Diane Strifel, I went to her retirement. But earlier that day at the SWAC meeting, she's been on that committee for, I think, over 20 years. And Kevin presented her with a black, which was a unique black because it has a garbage can on it. So most people don't have one of those. So congratulations to Diane. So, and then I also attended Friday, Matt Zero, they had a retirement thing for him. And I went to that. So that was it for me.
Thank you. I missed a meeting, so thank you, Commissioner Wayland, for taking over. I attended a pick committee, pick committee meeting. And Kevin reported on that the week prior and you took action on that. I had a phone call follow-up with Governor Dayton's office in regards to the task force and changes that have been made to the plan based on our recommendation. And I attended the Lakes and Prairies Annual Board Meeting at the Marriott. Great things are happening with Lakes and Prairies. I have a copy of their annual report if you'd be interested in to that. We did give an award, the Dennis Height Camp Award that goes for service, selfless service to someone in the, in the community. And Dale Raleigh was awarded that. Definitely something that was well deserved. Dale's retiring this, this spring. And the work that he's done with Clay County Seniors is important. But he's done such a great job throughout the years. So thank you to him for that. An item of note, on May 18th, they're happening, having an open house, grand opening for the Belsley site, the new head start and office space there if you'd like to attend that. And I had an update with Tony from Pheasants Forever at the Soil and Water Conservation District. They're working with Eric Hovey from the Highway Department just to kind of coordinate the planting of that out there, hoping to get going in the next couple of weeks. And thank you to Commissioner Haney for attending the executive director interviews for MetroCog. I've been really involved with that. So thank you for filling in in my absence, but did have several email and phone correspondence in regards to what the offer is there. But other than that, I've had my own committee happening at my house. So thank you to all of you for the well wishes on our daughter's birth. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you. I, I talked about the Oakport Joint Powers Meeting. And I mentioned that Jeremy Gregwire did the permit. And I, I don't think I mentioned the name of their company. It's Burt's Trucking. And I think I just wanted to recognize them for expanding their business in our county. So I, I just wanted to, in case I didn't mention Burt's, I wanted to make sure they were recognized for.
Thank you. Brian?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Thank you. Probably the first thing, I guess I've jotted down here. I didn't receive a call last night from the city in reference to the bonding bill. And they would like to, they said they need to have a response back to the legislators by tomorrow morning. So they are coming over, a couple of them and the city manager are coming over this morning at 10:15. And so I said I'd bring it up to the board this morning during reports. And I'm, I'm making the assumption, I talked with Kirk a little this morning in regards to it. But I sent out an email last week that said that we were included in the bonding bill to the tune of seven or 7.1 million dollars. Well, what I was told last night is that the Chair of the House Bonding Committee, a capital investment, said that yes, there's 7.1 million dollars in there, but it's for the addition to 20th Street. And learning this morning from Kirk that it was possibly put in for the 11th Street study. So there's a, there's a little discussion as to which is there. And of course, we thought it was, and were told it was for the transfer station. So what comes down to is they said that the city and the county need to decide what is your priority. And, you know, is it for a transfer station or is it for roadwork? And I just talked with her just maybe a minute or two on the phone last night. And we set up this meeting and I said that they're coming over at 10:15 this morning. And I said we'd get a consensus from you folks and representation from you folks, whoever you decide needs to sit in on that 10:15 meeting. But you know as, as I do.
Kevin and I should be there if it's based on, you know, our bonding for the transfer station. So I'll plan on being there. So I don't know if Kevin's available.
I think I can be there.
I think if you're looking for a consensus, though, the amount of work that the county specifically has put into one project, I think it would, that, from my perspective, is where our priority for this round is. I don't want to speak out of turn, but that's where I think it should be.
Well, I agree with that. I mean, we've been, you know, this has been going on for the last couple of years for this transfer station project. And so, you know, the other issues that have come up that the city has to deal with are recent issues. And so, you know, at least my understanding was that, you know, going after this bonding money was for the transfer station all along. So, you know, I would hate to see us change that priority at this late date. So, because it may not be there in the future. I mean, my, my position is for dealing with the legislatures is that if they say that that money can be used and is available for the transfer station, if it isn't used for that this year, it's gonna be a long time before that opportunity comes up again for the transfer station. So.
Other?
Well, I guess I'd have to agree. I mean, that's been our priority. So why would we switch now? It's just done.
I agree. Go with the transfer station.
I think at some point, one, it's unfortunate that, that there is a misunderstanding specifically in what dollars should be advocated for where. But it's great that there are big projects going on. But we've had a significant amount of staff and, and resources going towards launching this project. And, you know, I think it's an important one for Clay County. And, and at some point, maybe if we get the dollars for this, and then we can help advocate for that. But I think you've, you've heard maybe a consensus.
Well, Madam Chair, just a couple of thoughts on it. The Moorhead City Governing Board supported the transfer station as the number one priority. And, and it is the city's transfer station that's being replaced. And, and, but the other thing that came into being that kind of changed the rules just a little bit was the bid for the 20th Street overpass came in, how many million dollars?
Seven.
Seven million? So, you know, I think what they're maybe thinking, I don't know that. It was brought up that they don't have the $7 million for the 20th Street. So they can't accept a bid if that doesn't move forward. And I know they treated that as a priority for a lot of years as well. I'm just, you know, throwing out some food for consideration because I think it needs to be considered in your discussion. I think they feel like they honored and made the transfer station their priority number one. And they really don't want to change from that, is what I sensed from the conversation, the short conversation I had. So, but, you know, again, I, we want to see both projects go forward. But if there's not enough money.
Well, and I, I agree with what you're saying, Brian. You know, the, I mean, the way I look at it is, is that, you know, that issue with the, the bid problem on the 21st Street project, that came up a week ago.
Right.
And so if, if we weren't, hadn't already been dealing with this bonding money for the transfer station, that, they would still, you know, if we weren't eligible for this money possibly right now, they would still have that issue to deal with. So, you know, I, I don't think it would be wise on our part to change that where we, what we've worked on now for several years, actually. So.
Well, great. I think we're gonna have representation there at 10:15. And we got a consensus from all five of you that is the same. So we know what our position is. So that's good.
Yeah, I'm in kind of a tough spot because I served on the city council and I know how important that intersection is. My business happens to be right there also. So when they're talking $7 million and change, and then they're talking about an assessment district. Well, it's coming high on that. I've gotta deal with that too. But I believe that this transfer station is a priority for both the city and the county. And I think for our standpoint, there's no question that we have to go for the transfer station. So.
I didn't hear, Kevin, you can make it at 10, no, at 10:15? Are you able to make it?
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
I can certainly stay.
Super. Well, thank you very much. That's what we needed to hear.
I've got one of it. Are you done, Brian? I didn't want.
Well, with, with, just with that item.
Oh, okay.
That was item number one. But I'll certainly yield to you, Commissioner.
Sure.
You must just have a couple more things.
Just a couple more things. Well, a lot of them are duplications, though. The Greater Fargo-Moorehead EDC, I attended that as well. It went very well. Very positive things are happening in this community. Spent some time on some personnel issues again, as we do weekly, it seems like. I attended the Judge Gustafson's vestiture. Yeah, she's an impressive young lady that is joining the bar. I didn't realize that she had served in, was it Afghanistan or whatever? So she was in the guard for a number of years as well, maybe still is. But. well, maybe still is, but she, she's pretty impressive. Oh, we met with the head of meeting in regards to the custodial and maintenance staff in reference to the new correctional facility and law enforcement center and the personnel that are needed there and the equipment that's needed, and we feel with, with improving some equipment and getting some bigger sweepers and different things, which are one-time purchases over a ten-year period. We don't feel there needs to be an increase in staff at this time, which is a very good thing, both on the custodial side and the maintenance side, so. But they said they certainly want to, you know, keep their options open to come to you guys, and I said that, that's always exists, so. Attended Diane's retirement as well. The, oh, we did set up a, a tour for the sheriff's office personnel that hadn't been through the new facilities, and I haven't talked to anybody as far as how that went. I'm sure it went well. Attended the diversion meeting last Thursday, met with Nick Fricki from Construction Engineers last Friday morning in regards to any change orders, and there, we only talked about one, and that has been talked about several times, and it was a $1,700 change order in regards to the electronics. Remember, it was presented to you folks about, by Mark Sloan, the cameras issues. Well, there is some cost to us in regards to changing that over, you know, when you pigtail off things and, and things like that. So when you get electricians involved and it's a change, it costs a few bucks. So we went through that, and the, the simple explanation on that, it's, it's, it's because of the change that we requested. Matt and Rick retired over at the sheriff's office. I attended that Friday afternoon as well. And yesterday morning, Lori and I had the bonding interview with our bonding company, and I think that went really well. There wasn't a lot of new things, because we just had one last summer in regards to the final bond for the law enforcement center, but very complimentary about what things are going on here. I had a construction meeting yesterday afternoon with the law enforcement center and the, and the jail. Everything's moving along just fine again. We talked about that change order at that meeting, so I won't go over that again, but you can sense now the fact that everything has to fall in line, the furniture setup, the, the different delivery, even the deliveries of the furniture, you know, they, they set a scheduled date because there's several semi-loads coming in, and that disrupts then the finishing touches for painting and everything, so just everything has to be really scheduled tight right now and, and to make it all happen, and they're still very confident that we're on schedule for a July 24th ribbon cutting, so. And, oh, the last thing I have here is, we had mentioned this before to you folks, on May ninth, we're going to have resilient, resilience training. Darren has set that up through Sand Creek, and we're going to have it in the morning. There's basically two one-hour sessions that we're going to go through for the managers, and then we're going to break for lunch, and then we had hoped to have a planning session with the department heads and yourself. And that's, that can be a very flamboyant planning session because Darren and I are going to facilitate that, but we just really want to talk about where you folks and Clay County wants to go. So we've heard from, one, Commissioner Mojo has responded on the training and on the session in the afternoon, so just wanted to remind you, you don't have to tell me today, but if you tell me soon. If you don't go to the training in the morning, you can certainly join us for lunch and go into the afternoon and the planning session. That would be fantastic if you would, would help us out there. So with that, Madam Chair, that completes my report.
Commissioner Wayland?
Yeah, I was gone the, when Brian submitted his letter of retirement, unfortunately, so he finally did it, so. But I, I don't know if you discussed.
Brian and I are meeting after this meeting to kind of talk about the next.
Okay, yeah, because I think the board should be involved in, in how we move forward, and I guess I'm always of the opinion that, and, you know, Darren will be involved in this, but I think we should see if we have an adequate number of internal candidates before we spend the time and expense of going outside. And maybe there aren't enough people interested internally, but if there are, I think we should at least have that discussion and, and, you know, and then, you know, have the board decide how we should move forward. And I think we should do it soon, because the time is, is ticking by, so, and I think it's important, so.
We are, it's good that you brought that up. So we'll meet after this meeting. There are a couple of different options, and then we'll bring that to this board. I agree exactly with what you said. That'll be one of the options, but exactly sooner rather than later, so.
Yeah.
You're right on mine.
Yeah, you're, Madam Chair, you're right on target. That's, we've been talking about that, and the, the thought was that we'd bring some options for you guys to decide how you want to approach, but yeah, next, next week, we got, we didn't know that Commissioner Mojo would be here today and certainly wanted her involvement, all of your involvement in the decision to move forward, so we were bringing that to the board next week, so.
Good.
Are we going to get an update today on yesterday's meeting?
Yes, yeah. You had asked for Nick to come over, and he's meeting with you. We scheduled it for 10 o'clock, but, so it may have to be a quick one with meeting at ten fifteen, so, yeah, he's coming over to meet with you.
Anything else? If not, we are adjourned.